For being here, do we have, I think, Laxton said she was gonna be a little late. So we have, I see.
We have a quorum now.
Okay.
Hi, Ronnie.
Hi, Micah. Hi, Shawna. How are you guys doing? Okay, all right, we will get started then. We do have some guests here today and I'm excited about those folks having some conversation with us today and thank you for joining us. So as we have been doing for quite some time, and I think it's even more appropriate today, to have a moment of silence before we get started. There is absolutely so much going on, so much to deal with, as we were talking earlier about the fort, the fires and the COVID and just you name it. It's just so much that we have to consider, but for all of us, we have a lot to be thankful for as well. But there are a lot of people suffering, those people that have lost their homes due to the fires has just been devastating. So let's do a moment of silence. Okay, everybody, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Call the meeting to order. Mike, you want to do a roll call?
Sure thing. Counselor Paulson. Here. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Otcholi. I see you there. Counselor Platt, is he on here? Nope.
That's not here yet.
Counselor Boehner's not here yet.
That should probably be around six.
And Counselor Fender. And Mayor Gibson.
Yeah. Okay. So are we gonna do the public hearing first? What do we want to do here?
We have a minutes from April 1st.
Oh, that is true.
Through.
We need a motion for the minutes from April 1st.
I move approval of the minutes from April 1st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, I can count you. I have three, Mark, four, Shawna. Okay, four, five, there's five. Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
All right, next, I think what we need to do is to additions and changes to the agenda.
Good.
We have Alexandra Morales, who is here to talk to us about the wetlands over in the Rivers Edge community. I'd like to put her in the special presentation for number four.
Good.
Then we have an emergency resolution extension, which I'd like to add as 7.5.
Mike, can I request that we do 7.2.1 on that? Go ahead and get all the resolutions done and out of the way in the beginning of the meeting.
All right, well, we should probably move Pride up then.
I'm good with that, as long as the mayor's good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that too. So what are we talking about moving Pride up to where?
I think we can move Pride up to after the public hearing.
Okay.
Please. Or actually, let's move Pride up all the way before the public hearing.
Okay.
Kristin, I hope you guys can be quick, right?
Of course.
All right, so we'll move, we'll renumber the 7.4 to 7.1.
Okay.
And then we can add emergency resolution as 7.1A.
Okay.
And then at 7.5, I'd like to add authorization to grant CPI increase for management team.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think we're good.
Okay, so we're gonna do the special presentation first.
Yeah, I think we need to approve the additions.
Oh, nope, never mind, ignore me.
If we could approve the additions, is, are all the councils?
Yeah, I'll move to approve tonight's additions.
Alex is on now.
Second.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. You raise your hands if you're in favor. Counselors, I have one, two, three, four, five. Okay, 5-0. All right, agenda is set.
Okay.
We moved to special presentation now, Mayor.
Okay, we are honored to have Alexandria Morales, and then Alexandria is gonna talk to us about a project that she's gonna be working on. We're pleased, you're a high school student at Tuolton High, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, why don't you introduce yourself and give us a little background on what you're working on? Now, you did, did you have a slideshow presentation and then you prepared to share that with us?
Yes, I have a slideshow.
Okay, well, introduce yourself first and, you know, just give us a little background of what it is you're working on.
Okay, so my name is Alex Morales. I'm 17 and I'm a senior at Tuolton High School. And the environment is something that I'm very interested in and something that I think is somewhere where I wanna go, like for college and stuff, like something I wanna major in. And so this project, project kinda comes from just wanting to improve the nature that we have surrounding us and just take care of the environment that we have, so.
Well, it's much appreciated. It's something, where you look at the environment in which we're in right now, you know, I'm looking forward to a better environment, that's for sure. So much appreciated. Okay, keep going.
Okay, so am I allowed to share the slideshow or?
Yeah, you should be able to share it.
Okay.
Okay, good.
The area of concern is this trail by my house where I often go to walk my dogs and it's a great place to be surrounded by nature. But recently, the wetland area has been lacking the maintenance and care that it needs in order to be a thriving habitat that is beneficial to the community. And my plan is to make that happen. The area is home to many animals and aquatic life, and I feel it's important that we take care of the nature surrounding us. And because of the location of the wetlands and it being so close to the highway and dozens of homes, the area is already under enough of a threat. And so in order to preserve the beauty of the wetlands, I propose the plan to remove any invasive species that have overgrown there and replace them with native organ plants. Native plants provide shelter and food for native wildlife and also support pollinators and promote diverse habitats and food sources. Native plants also improve biodiversity, attracting a variety of birds, butterflies, and other wildlife. And good biodiversity allows healthy ecosystems to clean water and gives vital sanctuary for many living in the habitat. Overall, the necessity for native plants will, will help give us better environment in King City. After taking some time to look around the wetlands, these are the most common types of invasive plants in the, that surround the area. Garlic mustard, Himalayan blackberry, purple loostrife, and common ivy. Unfortunately, these aren't all of them, but the, these invasive plants pose a major threat to the quality of life in the wetlands. The area is very overgrown and these plants are competing with native plants and overall driving them out of the habitat. Of course, during this time, there are challenges with COVID and the current wildfires. However, hopefully, with given time for the smoke to clear, the effects of the wildfires were no longer pose a threat. But with the coronavirus, I feel that the area is big enough that keeping six feet wouldn't be a challenge and also having a mask mandate. I understand the seriousness of the coronavirus and people's safety, and if given the chance to, this being my senior year in high school, I would really love to get this project going sometime soon. But I know there are limitations to that, and I understand if that's not possible. Moving forward, the need for volunteers would not be a problem as the Tiger Youth Advisory Council has reached out and will be willing to give volunteers. And I would also be willing to reach out to local schools and the King City community if more volunteers are needed. I also plan to have local plant nurseries donate native plants, and I feel like this could connect the community to work towards a specific issue and concern in King City. In addition, I know there are other specifics about the project which can be further discussed if there is approval of my proposal. This project is something I am really excited for and passionate about, and I really hope you all can give me the chance to make a positive difference in our community. I am very hardworking and will be, and will put in my best efforts to make this an impactful change. Thank you for listening.
Wow, Alexandra, that was absolutely wonderful, and we commend you for what, what it is you're doing. We need more young folks to like yourself, to step up and try to help out. And what you're proposing is absolutely wonderful because we can see that it has an impact to improve the future of our community. And we just applaud you for what you're doing. So the question I have is what can we do to help you? Do you have any thoughts on what we can do as a city organization to help you out?
I mean, I'm not really entitled, like, I still have some things to work out concerning the project. But I think definitely providing some materials and tools that volunteers could use and that can make the process a little bit easier with like digging and removing invasive plants or anything like that would be very helpful.
So I'm gonna turn to Mike Weston, our city manager, to find out if there are any things that you need to be concerned about with a project like this in terms of guidance from the city, in terms of whether or not we need to be concerned about any ordinances or guidelines along those lines.
Thanks, Mayor. So Alexandria, I think you're aware that the well and area is technically owned by the HOA, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the city will definitely support your project. I don't think there's any reason that we wouldn't get behind something like this. We can probably provide a number of tools, materials, things of that nature. We may even be able to, you know, donate a few trees here and there or bushes and shrubs. So, and you might even get some manpower from myself or the council or some of the staff members. So I think we can all get behind you on that. You would need permission from the HOA and probably from Clean Water Services as well, because I believe Clean Water Services manages the facility or is kind of like the regional charge.
Yeah.
So I think if we can just get a letter from them and let us know what your timeline is on the project, I'm sure we'll all be able to get behind you.
Thank you. So I have, so Alexandria, hi, I'm Jamie Fender. And first, I just wanna say what a great job you did tonight. You were very well organized. You were very articulate. I think you have an awesome idea. And I really appreciate the energy and you coming and putting this together so, so professionally, if you will, maturely maybe. So I would love to, to work with you, Mike, if it would be okay. I think I would love to be a liaison, you know, in keeping on contact with you. But Alexandria, I'd love to be kind of the contact with the city and with Mike, and we can kind of, you know, navigate that connection going forward. And I'd love to help you out. I have a few other ideas on how to connect into the community. So in my other capacities of living in the city, I'd love to kind of help you as well. So if, Mike, do we have Alexandria's email address?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so Alexandria, I'll shoot you an email and then, you know, because we won't have time to talk about it all tonight. But I will send you an email and then you and I can off, offline kind of connect further and talk about it. And I'd love to help you out with this project if, if you'd be willing to have my help.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Wonderful.
So do we have any others who would like to comment on Alexandria's presentation?
Great job, Alexandria.
Thank you.
Very impressive. You have a.
Mayor, sorry, Shawna, I just, Mayor, I don't know, Alexandria, are you able to see the chats on the screen here?
Um, oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that you have a lot of support from people here on the chat, and I just wanted to make sure that you got that and you heard all that, those well wishes. So, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, and Shawna, were you finished?
Yeah, I was just commending Alexandria on, on being so eloquent and doing such a great job, and I was just trying to say, I think you have a bright future ahead of you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think, Micah, you might have had something.
I just wanted to say, great job and, and thank you for, for taking this on, because it's a great thing for our community.
Thank you.
And I think Smart, did you have a comment, Smart?
Yes, just a great job, Alexandria. I mean, over, over the years, I've worked with groups, even up until now, I support a lot of youth groups. I participate whenever I get the opportunity to help out. So like Jamie also offered, I'm also available to help if anything that you think I can help with accomplishing this project. Again, great, great job. I mean, it's, in this day and age in which we live, there's a lot of activities going on that we, we can decide to pick and choose which one we wanna do. So I really, I, I kudos to you. I commend your efforts on this. So, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I. Alexandria, kind of.
Hold on, hit Mike.
Alexandria, what's your timeline looking like? When, when do you wanna get this thing rolling?
Um, well, I don't know, like, I'm not really sure because the wildfires and smoke, air quality is kind of a big issue. So I'm, I'm sure as, as soon as that kind of clears up, like, like I said, I kinda wanna get it going as soon as I can. So probably around when, whenever we're able to go back outside and.
Well, work with Counselor Fender and let us get a timeline together. We'll, we'll need at least a week or two in advance notice to kind of get people going and the tools and equipment ready. We're gonna be planting trees and things of that nature. It's probably gonna take a little time to gather that, those vegetation pieces, local nurseries and stuff. But, you know, we're, you can use our facility down at City Hall to kind of store them. We can kind of hide them, hide them away in the garden area there for a little while until we're ready to plant them. And, and we can definitely help out on a lot of that stuff.
And I also think that we can generate some additional interest. I know that the person who does most of our articles for Regal Courier, Scott Keith, has been looking for additional articles to write. And this might be an outstanding one that he can put together through an interview with you and publicize it in the Regal Courier as well. So I'll reach out to him to find out what he can do along those lines and then connect him with you. Okay, Alexandria?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And I think Alexandria, just one, we might want to find what the recommendations are for planting, for the plants that are, the plants and trees, and make sure that the timeframe of planting is kind of optimal for the species. So that would just be something, you know, that you could work on right away to get going on the timeline. It's just a suggestion. So I know you're eager. We'll, we'll make sure and try to get this done before you graduate for sure, so.
That sounds good. And that important piece that Mike mentioned with Clean Water Services, that's probably important before we can, before you can actually get anything going. So if you need any help with that, let us know, okay?
Okay, very well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, once again, outstanding, Alexandria. This is so exciting, and we appreciate what you're doing, and we wish you the absolute best. Okay, you have our full support.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Now, you don't have to leave. If you don't have anything better to do, you can stay on, listen to the other things that we're doing. It can get kind of boring. I understand if you wanna leave, but welcome to stay.
Yeah, I have some homework to finish up, so.
Okay, Alexandria, have a great evening, okay?
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay. What do we have next here?
Open forum.
Oh, that's right. We do still have the open forum. Okay. Open forum, we welcome public comment at this time. The council will be happy to receive your comment pertaining to items on the agenda, including questions, suggestions, complaints, and items for future agendas. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes.
So before we get into this, I'm just gonna put this out here. If you have a comment pertaining to the public hearing that we're having on the building code fees, go ahead and keep that until we get to that portion of the agenda. Everything else, if you have questions about the Pride rates, the emergency resolution, CPI increases, the Casell software, or any of those matters, feel free to chime in or anything in general.
Okay.
You'll need to unmute yourself and.
Identify yourself, a full name, address, and let us know who you are. Do we have anyone who wants to comment at this time? Going once, going twice? Okay.
I'm gonna unmute everybody just to make sure.
Okay, let's give it a shot.
Are they unmuted, Ronnie?
I'm asking them to unmute, but nobody's unmuting, so I'm assuming that nobody wants to talk.
Okay, well, that's fine. We did, give them an opportunity, so we'll just move on.
All right, last chance, public comments, open forum.
Okay, let's move on.
Mayor, the floor is yours.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We wanna have Pride at 7.1. Do their presentation.
Hello.
Kristen, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
All right, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I know we're here to talk about rates, but I first just wanted to acknowledge that we were unable to pick up King City residents this week due to the hazardous air quality and, in an attempt to maintain the safety of our drivers and not expose them to that air due to the wildfires. We are planning on picking up double materials for customers on their next regular service day at no charge. But I also just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions about that before we get to the rate component. So please feel free to ask if you have any questions about that.
So what's your guideline in terms of being able to get back out there? My trash can has been sitting out there since Monday, so did I put it back in or is something gonna happen anytime soon?
Yeah, so unfortunately, we're kind of treating this like we do in a snow day, a snow situation, that once we fall more than one day behind, we can't get caught up because we just can't pick up everybody, you know, we can't pick up two or three days worth of people at one time. And because of the hazardous air quality, while we have resumed very minimal services, we're only working our drivers a maximum of about five hours to try and limit their exposure. And so that limited hours available combined with trying to get as much done as we can, there's just unfortunately no way we can get caught up. So yes, it will be Monday next week before we're back for garbage. And then you can place out double your garbage in plastic bags equal to whatever your can size is, and then we'll pick that up at no charge to make up for the missed collection.
Okay, so how will the homeowners know this? What, how are you communicating with the homeowners on this?
We've done so in a variety of ways. Most of them are through electronic communication. So we do have a newsletter that folks can subscribe to that we normally send out notices about once a month. But when there's things like that, we've been sending out about once a day with updates, and so they would get an email directly to their inbox if they've subscribed to that. We've also been posting updates daily on our website. We have information on all of our social media pages. And then we also have, of course, our customer service team who's been answering questions as people have them. And we also each morning, or each evening, actually, we're updating our outgoing phone message. So when people call in, they can hear what our plan is. But if they have further questions, they can either leave a voicemail if we're closed or wait to talk to somebody so they can clarify what to do for their account.
Okay, all right, so we can expect, my normal pickup day is Monday, so I can expect something probably next Monday.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'll pass that around to my few neighbors who have been asking me, and I didn't have an answer for them, so.
I appreciate that. And if you guys have any sort of, you know, communication channels that you use to communicate with residents, I know I have been keeping Mike and Ronnie updated each day with kind of what our plan is for the next day as well. So hopefully, if there's a way to, you know, push those messages out in another way, that would be great.
We're also looking at doing a flash alert too for the city. I know the police is already doing it. But we do the same thing as you do. As soon as you give it to us, we try to either repost it or send it out as a, as our message.
Jamie, you always do a pretty good job of putting something on next door.
Yep, I just opened it to post something now, so I will, I will post on Nextdoor and, and on Facebook. Also, just to confirm, Kristin, that is King City wide, right, for the entire city? Okay.
Yeah, all of King City residents are all on Monday schedule, so that would impact everybody.
Okay, great. I'll make sure and put that now and then. Great.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Kristin. You can continue.
Great, thank you.
Unless there are any other questions related to pickup. Anybody else? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so in regards to rates, the King City code uses a CPI methodology for rates. And so the goal is for rates to be set in a way that the rate of return falls between eight and 12% with a target of 10%. And then based on where that ROR comes in, a CPI index is applied annually. And so we turned in our report for 2019 on March 15th of 2020, which showed a rate of return in King City of 6.81%. So that falls outside of the range, and typically what happens if it falls outside of the range is it calls for kind of a larger rate review that involves projections. But to be honest, due to the uncertainty around 2020 and COVID, and this does not seem like the right year to try and predict what next, what this year is going to look like because we have seen impacts. I know we spoke to you a few months ago about some of the impacts that we've seen in terms of commercial accounts primarily shutting down services either temporarily or permanently, as well as customers struggling to pay their bills on time. So with all of that being said, we're proposing that we move forward with the CPI methodology as if our rate of return fell in that eight to 10% range rather than under eight, which means that we took the CPI index that we use, which for the year was 2.7%, and then we multiply that by the 1.25 rate factor, which would result in a rate increase of 3.375% across all lines of business. And then there is a little bit of a caveat there that we did see medical waste disposal rates go up quite drastically in this last year from the company that we use for our medical waste processing. And so there is an additional increase specifically on the disposal component for those customers as well, which is outlined in the, in the rate packet. So that's pretty much all I have to present. I know that the, the letter and the rate detail are in the packet. I would just share that generally, the most common service level in King City for residents is a 32-gallon cart. So if a customer does not have yard debris, their current 32-gallon rate is 2387. So the proposed rate increase would be, would go to 2468. So it's just right about 80 cent increase per month.
Okay.
You guys can review the data sheet. It's like the last six pages or so of the packet. If you, you have that before you. If you, you have that before you.
And, and this is basically within the guidelines that we set forth. Is, is that what we're saying that this rate increase would meet the criteria that we set some time ago for?
Technically, Mayor, the contract would call for a total rate review and a study falls outside of the percent of the rate on return. So the rate of return that's set in the contract is between eight and twelve. Below that, and what Kristen's saying is that because it's probably below that due to the COVID situation, loss of commercial revenue and possibly other things. So there's, there, there might be outline factors there we're not really catch, capturing. And so what she's proposing is to go with the, the typical CPI increase method as in this, in the study. Or not in the study, but in the contract.
Okay.
So it's, it's a much easier method. It doesn't cost the, both organizations a lot of money doing a, a study. And, and it just keeps the ball rolling and hopefully gets them back into the that comfort zone between the eight and twelve.
And, and I understand, and I always understand the need. I think this is the first time that I'm a little reluctant for any rate increase for our residents, knowing what the COVID nineteen has done to the salary of many, many people within King City. And I just want to make sure that any rate increase that we're gonna be dealing with is absolutely necessary. And I just want to go on record, I said, that I am concerned about that. And I know it sounds like a small dollar amount. I mean, we're talking about on average eighty cents increase. But we just need to be aware that every little bit of an increase, it can be impactful to a lot of folks. And that's just the reality of where we are right now. So if it's absolutely necessary, and I'm always gonna ask the question, what if you don't do the rate increase? What does it do to your business?
Yeah, and I, I completely understand that. And I know that that's, that's part of why we are proposing that we act as if our rate of return was a bit higher than it is. Because if we, if we did that larger rate study with projections, it would result in a, a larger request than we're currently asking for. So we're, we're trying to kind of meet in the middle a little bit there. So I do, I do understand that. And in answer to your question, the only real changes that we could make would be to reduce services. Because you know, we've, we see increases in things such as disposal rates, which are largely driven by metro, which we don't control. And you know, health insurance and a lot of our rate, the expenses that we see increase, we, we unfortunately don't have a lot of control over. And so then we look at what do we have control over? And that would be potentially reducing labor hours, which would be, for example, looking at reducing the frequency of a collection. And in King City, all of the services currently are picked up every other week except for garbage. And really, based on the metro service standards and minimum service levels dictate that things cannot be picked up less frequently than every other week without an exception. So garbage would be the only thing that we could look at to reduce labor hours, which would be to change the garbage from weekly to every other week.
Okay.
And my cat just turned on my TV by herself. I don't know how she did that. So good thing I have the remote, I can mute it.
So, okay, I, I think I've expressed my concern and, you know, it's obvious that this is an impactful time for a lot of reasons and your business is being impacted by what's going on with COVID nineteen. And we, as a vital business, we need to keep it going. Anybody else have any questions or concerns about the potential increases? It's okay if we don't. Okay. So what's the next step?
Uh, we would need a motion to move forward with the proposal.
No, I started interrupting here. I, I do have one question. I agree, it's, it's a tough time to ask for increases. It's a tough time for some members of our community to even, you know, a dollar might be difficult, y- y- you know what I mean? Is it possible to keep the twenty gallon rate the same? So that everybody has access to pride services without having a rate increase as long as they're at the minimum capacity? Is that a possibility? And then spread, you know, that sixty, seventy cents or whatever it is out or add it to the ninety gallon or something like that, just so that we can keep the basic service the same rate?
We can certainly explore any options that you would like us to. And if that's something that council is interested in doing, we would be happy to come back with another proposal. Another service level to just keep in mind that is available to customers that really do have a limited amount of garbage is on-call service. So then a customer can, it's only offered in a thirty-two gallon cart. But then customers can control, they're only charged that pickup fee, which is right now at fourteen dollars and eighteen cents each time they ask for a pickup. So customers that truly don't have much garbage can, you know, go a month between pickups, for example, which is usually most on-call customers go about once every four to six weeks. So that's another kind of lower cost option as well.
And we went through a pretty extensive look at this, just like last year. And you know, the option that we kind of went with, with the contract was the, the option that they're proposing right now, which is an annual CPI and if it falls outside, then it has this adjustment to it. So this is the formula that was in that contract that we agreed on last year. I think it's just our hope was that, I think that it would just fall into that category and it would just be kind of an automatic thing every year. But because it falls outside, now we have a choice if we want to do the rate study or we want to go with this.
Yeah. Well, okay, go ahead.
I think I would, I would support what Shawna suggests here and if we can explore the kind of a, a graded type of, or a, a step to the, to the rating. Because that, I, I'm sure there are families and, and individuals within King City that are being that, that are very tight on, on their funds right now due to, due to the current situation. And you know, i- if there is an option for that basic service, it, it should be explored. That's my, my feeling on it.
The, the one thing I would just caution, caution you on is that typically what hap- so a lot of jurisdictions choose to try and have the true cost of service be based on how much garbage folks have because most of the costs are not really related to disposal. Because, you know, the cost of driving down, the truck down the street with the driver, you know, those costs are consistent regardless of the size of cart that customers have. And we've found that in jurisdictions where, where there's too much of an artificial adjustment to kind of make those smaller carts seem more appealing. More customers may choose that cart because they see the cost savings. And then they're, they're cramming a bit more weight in that cart. And because they pay for their service based on volume, but we pay for disposal based on weight, you may not see the, the same overall quote-unquote decreases to the system as you wo- would expect, if that makes sense. So it, it can sometimes come back to bite us all in a few years.
A- and that's understandable. And I know we, we agreed to this last year in this approach. But I just feeling like the, with the current situation, you know, this, this year has kind of thrown everything into a, in, into a bit of a loop for everybody. So it having that extra data point might be beneficial to us as a council.
Reggie?
I think what might be useful is to educate our public about the on-call program that maybe they would have their garbage picked up once a month. And that would be a great savings without totally undoing all the work that we did last year.
And we can, if that's the direction that the council would like to go, we can certainly, you know, emphasize the lower cost options when we send out notifications to customers, highlighting not only the smaller carts, if people are not filling their cans all of the way, or the on-call service as well. Because, you know, the, the twenty gallon can, I know I have one at my house, is really, it's really small. And so the other concern is that sometimes people are like, oh yeah, I can get a smaller cart. And then they end up paying for extra garbage because they can't fit it all in there. And then it ends up actually costing them more money because paying for the extras rather than having the correct sized cart is more expensive. And so sometimes that can be complicated.
I, I think there are some really good points being made and, you know, I'm torn. And I know that we put the work in to try to, you know, come up with something that we all agreed upon. Works, I agree with what Mike is saying and I agree that we need to explore some options to help people. Along with, when would this rate increase become effective?
It would be January first.
January first.
What about, what if we kept the, the on-call fee the same? I mean, y- you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if, if a family is struggling, at least they have that option of a rate that's not being increased. I guess is what I'm kind of thinking is I'm just trying to think outside the box of how to present it to our residents and not have a rate increase, at least in one of the categories, if that makes sense?
Can I just chime in on that? I think the problem is, is it's a math equation. So if you cut one short, then you have to raise the others and like, so then every load and then the, the one group that's trying to get away with something, you know? It seems to me like we went through a big study on this. I think Kristen's group presented like six it was about six options, like six different options on all the different programs and things that they could do. And we sat through and for like, it was a good, good long and, and a couple of meetings, back-to-back meetings where we tried to hash this out and find the best program for our residents. And this program that we settled with was, in our view, based on all the options that were laid out, was the best program with the cheapest options for our residents that was consistent. And it still provided that on-call pickup option, which was still cheaper because we had a couple of residents that were like, well, I only pick up my trash like once a month. We're like, okay, well, here's an option for that, you know? I think it, just saving us from a lot more headache and a lot more going back and retracing our footsteps and ending at the same place that we've already ended at before. I think it's just a lot simpler just to move forward with what's in the contract and, and look at the rates and get it knocked out. I mean, it's only, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I appreciate that background, Mike. I, I wasn't aware of that, that you all spent so much time on it already. So keeping, you know, now that I know that, I, I think my feelings are changed a little bit because, you know, we need to be respectful of everyone's time. And it sounds like you've already put a lot of time and effort into this.
And I agree. Where, where I am concerned about any rate increase, I think it's probably appropriate to use the system that we have defined. But I would expect that pride would take the time to put out some information to customers to demonstrate how you can keep your costs as low as possible. I, I think that bit of information will be a great benefit. And if you will just commit to taking that time to make sure that, once again, we restate how people can keep their costs low. And then that would give me a little more confidence that we can move forward. And at least people will understand that we are trying to make sure that our residents are protected and the, to the best of our ability. So do you think that's feasible for you to just put out another blurt? Whether it be in the monthly bill or whatever the case may be, to remind people that this option for pickup on-call is available and that you can lower your cost by doing so if you need to.
Yeah, definitely, that's something we can do. And I'm also happy to run that, you know, run a draft of kind of what the, the rate increase notification may look like by Mike, or if there are a couple of councilors that would like to look at it, I'm happy to do that. And so kind of be like, this is what we think can get that message across and then take feedback if you feel like it should be delivered another way, if that would be helpful.
And then I have, I have one more question. Now, many companies who provide service, I'm talking PGE, Northwest Natural and the likes, have said that when a person falls behind, they're not gonna cut off their service. You know, have you guys considered something along those lines at least for a time period for those people who can't even pay their current bill? That maybe it would be a moratorium at least until the end of the year that the service won't be discontinued because a person is in arrears.
Yeah, and we, we actually have made that commitment since, basically since about mid-March. And we have not disconnected any residential services due to the COVID pandemic and understanding that there are quite a few customers that are struggling. And so that's where, you know, we, we have seen some of our past due balances go further out and get larger. And the good news is that Washington County actually was able to allocate some of their I believe it was out of the CARES Act, but there's so many acronyms that they're all blending together in my mind. But some of the funding that they got from the federal government, they were actually able to allocate to community action to, much like they help folks pay their electric and gas bills, they now can help them pay their garbage bills as well. And that is not only for unincorporated county, but for all of the cities as well. And so that is just being rolled out this month. It'll be for the customers that do receive late notices, they will be notified of that starting this month. So for folks that qualify who are struggling to pay their bills, there is funding to help them. I think it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the whole county, which sounds like a lot until you think about how many customers may be impacted. It will probably go pretty quickly, but we're hoping we can be, kind of get our customers in before other people start to notify their customers. So we're actually printing out letters today for those folks. And if, and if you would like us to, you know, the county had directed us, we were doing it on our own, kind of taking it a month at a time. And then the county had directed us to do it at least through the end of September to keep those shut-offs. But if King City would like us to extend that to the end of the year for King City residents, we would be happy to do that as well.
I would feel good about that. You know, I don't know how many people are in that situation. But, you know, to, I, at least make that offer to people that their service won't cut off to the end of the year would be very noble of your company to do that. I would really appreciate that. Now, that's me speaking. I need to know how the rest of the council feels about something like that. I, I can't be the only one that says, it's a great idea, let's do it. So any thoughts on that moratorium until the end of the year?
Yeah, can I pipe up? I think it is a great idea. I, I would be fully supportive of that. I'd also, right, one of, one of the constant struggles that we and every other municipality out there have, right, is about communication and connecting with our residents. And so I do think that it's really important that we try to disseminate the information. So I guess, Kristen, I would just be curious, is the, is this funding only going out by letter by way of people who are currently in arrears? Or i- is that information somewhere that could be shared, you know, within our, within our community? Or I would, you know, I, I, it's, it's hard because you don't want to blast it out and then have absolutely everyone in the world apply and the funding gets dried up within twenty minutes, which is what we've seen a lot already. But at the same time, it's important for people to know how to access information too, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share the information on how to make that available to customers. Right now, the, how we're notifying folks is it is being put on our late notices. So it'll be printed on every late notice that goes out. And then we've been tracking the customers who we've not been stopping for these last few months. And so we, we have been sending those people separate letters this week, making them aware of it as well. So we're, we're trying to bring attention to it, to the folks who are in this situation, most likely to need it. And then they, you know, it isn't just available to anybody. So it is based on certain classifications and income and things like that, that I can't rattle off, to be honest.
And I, and I, and I think, as long as, I, I like the idea of a separate letter and it going along with notices. You know, I think that, I think that is sufficient, especially for those individuals. I think for the rate increase, Mike, I would be interested, I, I think, just given Um, I think for the rate increase, Mike, I would be interested, I, I think, just given w- we have seen some really um, difficult issues in the city lately with increases of fees and so forth, it's become very acrimonious in certain neighborhoods. So I would really love to try to help Mike with disseminating some of the, the information later this year about the increase that's coming. So maybe we can loop back around, you know, in October and just talk about, or in November, you know, talk about how best do we prepare people in addition to what Pride is doing, how to complement that communication? So I'd volunteer to kind of be involved in that if you want some additional help and, or Ronnie, right, whatever.
I, usually Kristen and their company does all the, the pamphlets. And it'll cost us, it'll cost us like six grand to do it.
No, I don't want, I, but I do think that like, I could put it on Nextdoor electronically. I could put it on Facebook electronically, right? I don't, I don't want to have the cost of mailing it out or anything like that, no. But uh, but I just want to, if I can get a copy of it somehow, or you know, we could figure out, maybe Kristen, uh, an electronic form that you do on Facebook or something, and I could share it or something like that, I think um, I'd, I'd be interested in doing that.
Jamie, if you get that information, if you just uh, send it to me, I'll send it out on our high net.
Yep.
And that reaches about eighty-five percent of our Highlands community.
Right. And I'm sure we could put it in the KCCA newsletter as well. So I mean, I think we could get a form, you know, we could, we could get it electronically out to a lot of people um, between kind of all of us. Um, and I'm happy to kind of spearhead that, that effort, so.
And if, if we can uh, somehow link it on the uh, KC, uh, King City website, that would be sufficient. So I, I, I think we've uh, covered it uh, sufficiently. So we're going to need a motion uh, for uh, approval and move forward. Uh, do we need a, a motion that also talks about the agreement to, for the moratorium until the end of the year, uh, to not uh, uh, suspend anyone's service? Uh, that's a question.
You know, it's kind of a, you want to go, you want to tackle this, Kristen?
I, I was just going to say, I'm happy to commit verbally for the record that we will do that for King City residents. What, you know, from a policy perspective, if you need to make a motion or a resolution, that's, you know, I'm not the expert there, but I'm happy to commit.
I don't have an answer to it, right?
Mike's the expert, I'm pointing at him.
Well, I think the, I think a resolution is, what we have right now is kind of like a verbal commitment, right?
Yeah.
Unless we're going to change our contract and go through and write a new contract or something like that, I think at this point in time, we're taking their word on face value.
Okay, that's fine.
And it's a good faith commitment from their organization, which has generally been very good for us and good for this area and they're honorable organization. And, and they're doing the best they can for our citizens and, and it shows them what their work product is, so. Um, you know, I'm personally comfortable accepting Kristen's statement o- over the, the Zoom. It's recorded, by the way, and online.
So I, I do want to uh, support uh, what Mike just said about your company, Kristen. You guys have been good to us and we have enjoyed a good working relationship. These are just abnormal times and we have to have these kind of tough, uncomfortable conversations. And uh, but we do appreciate what you guys do and uh, the support that you provide to the uh, city of King City, okay?
Thank you very much.
We have um, councillor, oh well, councillor Cholli, as our hand up to you, so.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, um. Please go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to move uh, that uh, council approve the proposed increase in garbage rates, which uh, is according to the contract that we entered into with Pride disposal one year ago.
So we have a motion and a second. Councillor Cholli, did you want to talk?
Yes, uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, the question I have is, uh, so what would it do if we kind of delayed their implementation into January? Like April, what are, what are the implications for that?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know that I can answer that because I would have to look at um, what the revenue expectations are for the first quarter that we would not be receiving. Um, we, I do have a couple of other Pride team members on the phone, if either of them feel that they can better answer that. But I, to, for me to answer it, I would have to get back to you. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I'll just point out that the way the contract specifies, this is the simplest way that the contract specifies. If we don't do it this way, then what we have to do is a rate increase, or not a rate increase, but a, a rate study, which would most likely end up in a rate increase more than what we're proposing. So I just want you to remember what the contract states, so that you understand where we're at.
Okay. And I, I appreciate the question, uh, Mark. Uh, but I, I think we'll go back to what we said, that uh, we'll uh, work within the contract. Uh, we have an agreement to uh, make sure there's moratorium on uh, uh, stopping service and all those things, so I'm feeling comfortable. So I think we've already had a motion and we've already had a second. So we are basically uh, done. Now you need a show of hands or how do you want to do the uh?
You need to show hands from the councillors, those that are in favor. Have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's unanimous. So we'll go with the rate increase for the contract of CPI plus the one point two five factor. Thank you.
Okay, Kristen, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And the rest of your team.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Then uh, the next is seven point one A, which is the emergency resolution. Um, this is an extension of the emergency resolution. Um, I can read it off if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, it's a resolution number uh, R twenty twenty dash nineteen. A resolution extending the declaration that a state of emergency within the city of King City, whereas Oregonians in urban and rural areas of the state have been affected with the COVID nineteen virus. And whereas the Oregon Governor Kate Brown has declared COVID nineteen virus is a global pandemic and called an emergency. And whereas ORS four oh one point three oh nine authorizes the governing body of a city to declare by ordinance or resolution that state of emergency exists within the city. And whereas ORS four oh one point three oh nine allows the city to establish procedures to prepare for and carry out any activity to prevent, minimize, respond to, or to recover from an emergency. And whereas ORS four oh one point three one five allows the city to enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to mitigate, therefore respond to, or recover from an emergency or natural disaster. Whereas the city council approved and adopted resolution number twenty twenty dash zero four on April first, twenty twenty. And whereas the city council of the King, city of King City wishes to extend that state of emergency as the COVID nineteen virus poses a threat to our city for three months, or whichever is less. Now therefore be resolved, the city of King City declares an emergency related to transmission of the COVID nineteen virus. City councils spends to these public contracting rules as they relate to preventing, preparing for, minimizing, responding to, or recovering from the COVID nineteen crisis. Uh, and the city, authorize the city manager or his designee with the authority to enter into contracts, incur obligations, and take all necessary steps necessary to mitigate, prepare for, respond to, or recover from the COVID nineteen emergency. And to protect the health of city employees, the human resource department may issue emergency rules or guidance on the use of sick leave, telework, remote work, or other policies that shall be in effect only during the inter- duration of the emergency. And by the state of emergency shall last so long as the COVID nineteen virus poses a threat to our city for three months, whichever is less. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, adopted uh, on September sixteen, twenty twenty, or approved and adopted uh, today's date. Any questions or concerns over the resolution? Say, cover it properly?
Thank you for doing it. Uh, we need to continue it, keep it on the books.
We have a motion and a second, move this forward. I got Gretchen and who was the second? I got councillor Boehner and I need a second.
Trying to take it.
All right, I've got. All right, so I've got councillor Boehner moves and councillor Thompson second, uh, discussion. Mayor?
Nope.
Hearing none, I guess we go for a vote uh, by showing hands. I'll count them up. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, unanimous vote on that. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Seven point one B, our next one, that's the uh, public hearing um, for the King City Building Inspection Program Fee. Mr. Mayor, should I read this introduction here?
Yes, sir.
All right. This is a public hearing. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is to consider the King City Building Inspection Program Fee modification per OAR nine eighteen dash zero two zero dash zero two zero and ORS four point, or four five five point two one zero. I will identify the subject, announce when the public hearing is open, and request anyone interested in stating their feelings regarding the matter being considered. Failure to raise an issue in person or by letter to the city council precludes raising of that issue at a subsequent time on appeal. Any party with standing may appeal the decision of the city council to the attorney general or district attorney according to the rules adopted by that board. If you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, please identify yourself as wishing to speak when we call for testimony. When called to speak, please con, please identify yourself, give your name, address, and make your statement. Maximum time allotted for testimony shall be three minutes for individuals. Um, and we'll have twenty minutes for applicant persons representing, that'll be uh, the city itself and staff presenting, and then ten minutes for applicants for rebuttal. Uh, there's someone at the door, Chris. Public hearing, on behalf of uh, Mayor Gibson, we call to order the public hearing regarding the King City Building Inspection Program Fee modification per OAR nine one eight dash zero two zero dash zero two zero and ORS four five five point two one zero. Uh, staff report, we're going to ask uh, Ronnie Smith and Dave Flemings to present for us the, did we lose Dave? Oh, oh no, there you are, I got you. You're, it's one of those musical corners. So uh, we'll hand it off to Dave and Ronnie to present their fee proposals.
All right, so if I get cut off, I have bad internet, um, Dave, I'll let you take over. Um, so just going down the memorandum that we have in the packet here. Um, the city hasn't had, uh, we haven't touched these fees in quite some time, and I want to say about fourteen years. Um, so it's time to look at uh, modifying the fees. Um, I would also like to remind the council that we do have a permanent tax rate, but it is uh, very limited on what we can use it for. And uh, it, it doesn't allow us much room to work. Um, what, so there, uh, with the state of Oregon, we're allowed to charge fees on certain items, and this is one of the items that we're allowed to charge fees on. And um, so the criteria that we used was uh, OAR nine one, sorry, nine one eight dash zero two zero dash zero two two zero um, and ORS four forty five point two ten, which our laws that saying that we could how to go about uh, raising the fees and um, all that great stuff. Uh, I have no agency comments. Um, at this time, I do not have any written comments that I res, I haven't received. Um, so Dave, would you like to add anything to that?
No, we provided notices required to the state of Oregon. Um, we're required to notify the state building codes division when we're going to do that. And they were provided notice, um, and folks could either provide response to them through that process, or they were notified of when the meeting was tonight, and they're able to comment at the meeting as well, so. Um, I think everybody's had great opportunity um, to provide that. That notice we provided to the state was required to be forty-five days before today, so it's been out there for quite a while.
I'd just like to expand a little bit on the explanations on what we're, why we're kind of doing this. So council understands and uh, what we have going on. You'll notice in your packet, there's some information about Casell software. Um, that's one of the driving forces, but really, the largest driving force is that we haven't, we haven't addressed these in over a decade. And so we're coming back, taking a look at what these fees actually are costing us for staff time, materials, things of that nature, and doing some moderate adjustments to make sure that we're trying to capture um, what these things are costing us. The other thing is that we're about to turn the page on growth. And as that growth comes in, we need to make sure that we're not going backwards. Um, so the hope in setting these fees right now is that we'll be able to capture the true cost of what it's going to cost us to do the development and what it's going to cost us to manage that growth. Um, part of managing that growth is upgrading our systems. Our current systems can't handle the, the forecasted growth. And that's what Casell brings to the table for us, is it gives us the ability to manage that future growth that's pending, so. Um, just so you're aware of some of the background information that's going behind this and what's kind of driving us to try to work for this now and get ahead of it before it actually comes through the door.
Um, so does the councillors have any questions pertaining to the memo that was, that's in the packets? Um, are any questions on the fees that are part of the exhibit?
Um, I, the only question I have is, uh, and Mike, you alluded to it, but we're fairly confident, I mean, we're talking about uh, some real uh, heavy-duty activity starting out maybe in five years. I mean, are we going to, is this going to really put us in a position where these rates will be um, relative in five years? I mean, will they be uh, uh, five years from now?
Okay, so yeah, so we've, for this particular.
Ronnie? Can't hear you.
Ronnie, we lost you. So um, I think what Ronnie's trying to get at is that we took a look at what this was going to cost us over the next five years, and we tried to adjust accordingly. But there are elements in here that are built in to adjust if necessary. So if we need to, we can go in and adjust these for the CPI. We just haven't done it in like ten years, like we would have done. So like coming in now and then trying to play catch-up, like a lot of these cities do uh, do rate reviews every year. And it's by CPI every year. So we just haven't done that as a city, and we're kind of going through these growing pains of, of not doing this for so long. And so a lot of it is catch-up, a lot of it is planning and preparing for impacts of the future, so.
Okay. All right. I know it's absolutely necessary. I'm not questioning that at all. I, I, so what would be a logical next review? I mean, if we're not going to do it every year, when would be a logical time to do another review on this so that we're in making sure that we are keeping pace?
Okay, so the next, if, if I don't get cut off here again, with the, with my internet. Uh, the next one is July one, twenty twenty-two. After that, it's going to be July first, twenty twenty-four. Following one is going to be July first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So we can look at it every two years?
Right. Ronnie might mute again. But yeah, I mean, and okay, I feel good about it. That's what I really wanted to know.
I have a question about the uh, franchise fee. And it appears on page thirty-two of the, what Ronnie sent out. And my question is, um, on Comcast, there's a franchise fee of five percent of gross revenue. And my question is, we annexed the Highlands. And at that point in time, was this franchise fee investigated? Because it wouldn't have been captured by King City before the annexation.
So the franchise fees, what we did is when we annexed the Highlands there, is we sent notices out to all the service providers, Comcast, Frontier, Northwest Natural, PG, and everyone that we have contracts with. Bad echo. So. I'm just, everybody bear with me.
Is that, is that you, Mike?
Yeah, I think so. Is that better?
Yeah, yeah.
We were getting a feedback loop somewhere along the line. Anyway, we basically sent out to the service provider that we be annexing the Highlands, and therefore, the franchise agreements or franchise contracts that we have with those entities then become part of the King City franchise. That all gets shifted over from that franchise fee going to like Washington County to coming to King City. So those have begun to start filtering over our way. Does that answer your question, Counselor Platt?
Yeah, so this is a process that as we begin annexing additional areas, that will be covered.
Yes, it yes, as we annex additional areas, we notify those utilities, and then those are automatically covered underneath our franchise agreement with those entities for providing those services. Any other questions or concerns that we could address on this? We can move forward with the public hearing. Okay. All right, so Mayor, I'll just start off where we left off. After receiving the staff report, do any members of the City Council wish to abstain? Do any members of the City Council wish to report any significant ex parte contact? If so, is there any members of the audience who wish to comment or challenge that report, which we don't have? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the City Council to hear this matter? None? Does any member? That's the same? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the City Council? Hearing none. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person or by letter today, you'll be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent item or any subsequent item on appeal to the would it be Court of Appeals, wouldn't it? Our consumer and business services failure to specify and address the approval criteria the staff reviews to describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Unmute all. So if you want to be able to unmute, if you'd like to speak in favor.
Mike, just so you know, I had to switch from my computer to my phone for better internet, so you have control of the computer.
Hearing none, does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? Does anyone wish to provide neutral comments? None but a car. If there are no further questions, Mayor, your, your, hold your court to entertain a motion and close the public hearing. Mayor Gibson, I think you're muted.
I was muted, yeah. Okay, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Anyone? Everybody's muted.
Everyone's muted, so um, can you unmute?
To close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Show of hands.
That was next to close. We have a unanimous to close the public hearing.
Okay, hearing is closed. Thank you.
Now we need a motion to consider the resolution.
I move that we consider the resolution regarding the fee structure.
Second.
The motion and second to consider approving the King City Building Inspection Fee modifications through Resolution 2020-18, a resolution revising fees, charges, fines, and assessments of the King City, Oregon, and rescinding Resolution R 2020-03.
So we need to show the hands?
May I make a comment first, please? My comment is, in my conversations with constituents over the last few years, it has been made eminent, absolutely clear that current residents do not want to be subsidizing new development. They want development to pay for itself. And I think it's important that we have the increased fees so that as development occurs, it will in fact pay for itself.
Good point.
Yeah, good. Yeah, that's a great point.
That's what we're trying to do, for sure.
We have a motion and a second, Mayor.
We still need to have both.
You want to call for it?
Yes, show of hands, please.
All those in favor? I have seven, seven zero, so unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much.
The final item that we have on the agenda, or no, not the final, next to final, is to discuss and consider the implementation of the Casell hosted software and service proposal. Did you all have a chance to review that?
Yeah.
There's a number of suites with Casell that will help. One, our auditing trails. So you know that little thing we get dinged on every audit?
Yes.
Casell is designed for a municipal financial system. It's actually interfaces well with what we do. It also allows for us, it has all these, help me, it has all these modules. It covers recordings, so you know Ronnie's recording resolutions and ordinances. It allows us to, it has a courts module. Courts module allows us to interface with our police database and get our our records for tickets. It has our community development module that will allow us to get a organization system for permits based on however we want to organize it, whether it's by land parcel, whether it's by tax lot or by account number. We have that ability. And this software basically will interface with everything that we do from top to bottom. It'll take a little while to get all the modules up online. We are starting off small, so we're starting off focusing on the financial modules and then moving into the community development and the recording modules. So Ronnie, do you want to kind of talk a little bit about maybe some of the elements I may have missed in my brief overview?
Yeah, so just to go a little bit more into depth here, so we've been looking at this for quite some time, since December of 2019, we kind of started the process. In January, we started meeting with other companies. We met with Casell, we met with Gov, MyGov, Springbook, Exella, GovPilot, and then every, the main items that we looked at were data security, ease of use, promoting, promote process of submitting, submit a process of online online information compatible with city long-term goals. Those were the main goal, the areas that we were looking at. Casell meets all of those. It meets with long-term, you know, fifty years from now, if they continue. So Mike, do you want to go into the financial part of it, or do you want me to?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go, go for it.
Working, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Platt.
Okay, this is called a hosted software.
Correct.
Does that mean that we input the data and the data is all handled with the hosted software?
It's hosted on a cloud.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's basically what it means is so instead of, instead of it being housed in-house, where it's a lot more expensive to get the products that we want, this one will allow us to store it on the cloud, allow us to, allow, sorry, Casell to do updates as fast as they, once they come out.
Let me try to help you out here.
Yeah, thank you.
Casell does not manipulate our data at all.
No, no, no. That was one of the parts that we looked at, and it's, once it's in, it stays there and it has an audit trail.
Yeah, so the key with this is, by hosted, it means that they have their own IT group, their own servers and, and system that they integrate with our data system to make sure that if there's ever a problem, they're responsible for fixing it, not us. The key with, the difference is right now, most everything we have is on our server. Here, and so every time we do an upgrade or anytime that we try to bring in something new, like we brought in PageFreezer, we brought in these other items that we were required to by Oregon law, then that eats up our server space, and it starts slowing down our systems, and then we have to basically buy all the software ourselves, maintain all the software ourselves. Then we have to hire IT folks, and if you've experienced our IT folks, you know. So this is a system that's is hosted by Casell. It runs off of their server, so it does go through the cloud. But it is contained, and it's, it can't be manipulated, so it really helps us with the audit trails. There is a point in time where we're uploading all of our data into their system so that it plays nice with ours. So that will take some time, and that's why I think when we're looking at what it takes to start up, we're looking at anywhere from twelve to fifteen months to get one of the modules going, because there's a large section of uploading all the records, and it's like, just to give you an example, Dave, it's when when we take our land use ordinances and we have them codified, we send them over to MuniCode, who then puts them into legalese and sends them back to us once they've been recorded with the county and once they're put into legal format. Then we take that, we put it into our land use code, or we put it online so people can access it easily. It's a very similar process.
Question that I have, and you know, the, the, the thing that we keep seeing in our audits, how does this resolve that specific piece where audit after audit, they talk to us about this? How does this first suite or module satisfy that need that's highlighted in our audits?
So Mr. Mayor, great question. The Casell program is designed for government use. And then the second thing is, our auditors recommended looking at the programs that we talked about. And that was Casell, MyGov, Springbook, Exella, and GovPilot.
So to your question, Mayor, the thing that we get written up on is that in QuickBooks, the administrator can go in, do stuff at any point in time. They can go back and change their journal.
Yeah.
Afterwards, so there's no audit trail.
Right.
So they have to have their journal entries follow suit, so there's an audit trail. They can't go back and change their journal entry after the fact.
Oh, okay.
And then it's a monitored system, so there's more financial checks and balances, less fraud possibilities.
Okay, and that definitely is satisfying that need that's been highlighted in our audits year after year, right?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question. That's, that's fine. So.
Counselor Boehner has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Gretchen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. This is great as long as this company is in existence. Let's say ten years from now, they file bankruptcy, they go bye-bye. How do we have the ability to get our data and switch it to another company? I'm just really concerned. That's one of the issues of having everything up on the cloud versus having records here.
Yeah, so a lot of that could be done by what is called a CSV file. So you just, basically you download it's basically a backup of all the files of all the data, and you can put it into your new system. We just have to work out the legalese with them on that part.
If they were to go belly up
Correct.
we'd have to take on a new company.
Correct.
It's a pretty smooth transition to move the.
From my, from my experience, there is not really ever a smooth transition with anything. Especially when it, especially when it comes to, especially when it comes to IT software, there's always some kind of hiccup somewhere.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, as I say, my concern is, one, the company going under, and two, when I was on the Tiger Council, we had to switch our financial service, servicer twice, and there was a really long, involved delay in getting the new company up so it was working. So it's, it's just a concern I think we need to be aware of.
But then what's the alternative? I mean, you know, is there any other way of doing this? I mean, the cloud is the cloud?
I understand, I understand that. My concern is, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of these issues. I mean, it happens that companies go out where we decide, we, okay, now we want to go to Springbrook.
So Gretchen, so Gretchen, the other thing too that we could do too is if they did, we could just put all the stuff on the server. The, the, the program on a server. It's just now it won't be updated. So I mean, there's ways around it. We just, we just got to, you know, it's just the risk of doing any kind of business with any, any company. Because right now, right now, the way we're doing it is we're using Excel to for courts and tickets. I'm sorry, not Excel, Excel, Excel. And we're using Excel for business license. I mean, you could ask Viva, that was, that was fun.
No, I, I understand, and I understand why we need to go to a program like that. My only concern is making sure that there won't be a problem with the data that's up in the cloud if we either change or lose this company.
Right. So price tag wise, the financials, and how do we pay for this? And are we good?
Mike, would you like to go onto that one, or would you like me to go onto that one?
You may disagree. So, um, Ronnie and Mira swear to me that it will pay for itself with the fees. I doubt it, but, uh, I, I, I just have experience with this stuff. It always takes more staff time, and it always has like a learning curve that you have to catch up on, and it's just, there's, there's a lot of hidden overhead costs, I think, with implementation like this. So, I'm a little reluctant on, on saying that it's going to cover itself, but based on what we have estimated, based on our conservative estimates on building codes and what kind of fees that we collect on an annual basis, and we did a very conservative look at that with our numbers, so if those come in like they have historically, theoretically, it should cover itself. And we'll have to kind of, uh, evaluate that as we move forward. But, uh, you know, there are some upfront costs. I think it's roughly, I think it's about sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand for the entire package and the suite, but that's broke out over a period of five years, so when you look at, um, the way that it's caught, broken up in the memo that, uh, Ronnie and Mira kind of broke down, uh, it, it looks like we should at least break even. We might even, um, bring in some additional revenues to pay for, uh, staff costs here and there, so. There, there is a fiscal impact, though. And, you know, we've been putting this off and putting it off because I wanted to get closer to our, uh, our timeline for the annexations.
Right.
And, uh, the other reason why we, we're kind of bringing it up now is Casell is currently working with, uh, forty-plus other sites. And, um, am I frozen again?
No, no, you're good.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind. So, and because of COVID nineteen, they are behind, uh, the eight ball a little bit on getting the products out. So right now, they are looking at for a full full rollout of all the modules is about fifteen to eighteen months. Okay, um, so for an example, it's so we will probably get our ledger within a year to fifteen months. Um, and then, once that goes live, then we start paying monthly, uh, monthly fees for that one. Uh, but all the other fees won't happen until, all the module fees won't happen until they come live. And speaking of the other fees, um, I did get them to agree on if, on the, I believe it's on the second page of the memo, uh, for the timeline, um, if you look at about the middle of the page. So if we signed the contract just today, we would have to sign a check for five, for seven thousand, seven hundred, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars today.
To get the ball.
Yeah, and then the next one, the next seven thousand dollars is going to be, uh, July one, twenty-twenty-one. And then the last payment for the end conversion portion of it is July first, twenty-twenty-second. Twenty-twenty-two, sorry, twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two.
So Ronnie, when would the monthly payments kick in, the, the next line, the hosted maintenance and support?
What, what, whenever the, whenever the modules come live.
What, which, what?
So, 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 okay, so just say for right now, uh, the general ledger is one module.
Okay.
Okay, and then the fee for that is two hundred and six dollars. So we would start paying that yearly or monthly, whatever we want to do, uh, for that module. The next module would probably be a utility management website services. Um, and then whenever that comes up online, whenever, that could be twelve months to fifteen months?
Oh, are you saying that the seventeen forty-three, that figure for the hosted maintenance and support is once, that's the total of all the modules, once they're all?
Or, what page is that on? I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, it's just the line right below where you were referencing on the page two of the memo in the middle.
The first phase.
On, on the memo, um, on page two that you were reading, Ronnie?
Okay, on page two. So is that, are you talking about the seven thousand five?
No, I'm talking about the line right below that. It says hosted maintenance and support will be seventeen forty-three per month for, for workstations.
I'm, I'm just looking for it, I'm sorry, give me just a minute.
I'm pretty sure it's right below what you were just reading, but maybe not. It's page two of the memo. I think.
Well, while he's looking, can I ask you a question, Mike?
Yeah, go for it.
Um, one, how soon would they be able to get this up and running?
About fifteen to eighteen months, and that fee doesn't kick in until it's running.
Okay, and that's just for the first module?
Yeah, that's seventeen forty-three per month. The, the one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars per month, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm with you guys now. So, yeah, that fee is for everything.
That's for all the different modules or just the one module?
All the different modules.
So that would be the community development suite, the finance, the permitting.
Nope, no, so, so, so Mike, the in, in that one, the community development is not a part of this.
Oh, so figure one doesn't, does not have all the modules?
Correct. No, yeah, that's correct. Figure one only has phase one of what we're recommending for right now.
But wasn't there like a thirty-three thousand dollar per year fee for all?
Right, yeah, so that's how we kind of estimated the fees. Um, so, and for the twenty, 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 twenty-one master fee schedule, that's how we.
So, okay, Ronnie, I'm going to cut you off. So Counselor Thompson, if you look at, um, under the fiscal impact on page three of the memo, second paragraph, last sentence, it says the proposal cost is for thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars for implementation, plus the thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six thousand on an annual maintenance and support fee. That's your total cost.
Oh.
That's everything. Right now, for phase one, you're looking at that twenty thousand dollars per year for phase one.
Right.
Once everything's going, it's going to be the thirty thousand and change.
Okay, so, the bottom line is, we wouldn't have this in place during the rest of fiscal twenty-one. It wouldn't be, or, it wouldn't be in place until fiscal twenty-two.
That's correct, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, figure about fifteen months from now.
My other question is, and I don't know the answer, and you may not know the answer, are we anticipating any annexations before we finish the master planning process?
Yes.
A little Fisher Road, south of Fisher Road, maybe, but that's going to take a concerted effort to go do that.
Okay, so we're not looking at any annexations down in the new area.
Not until after the master.
Not until after. I just wanted to make sure some of the developers weren't looking at annexing now.
They'd love to, but, uh.
Oh, yeah.
No.
We, we don't, you're not taking any annexations until we're finished with the master plan.
All right. I was just, I just wanted to make sure, I thought that was the answer, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, with all of that being said, what do you guys need from us?
Uh, to discuss, take public hearing, you know, pub, I'm sorry, not public hearing, uh, public comments. And then, and then direct Mike and, and I to do.
Clearly need to take public comments on it, because we had a public comment period earlier. But, um, what I will mention is that this is not budgeted right now, so we're going to have to come back for a supplemental budget. We need to at least put in the piece for getting them moving, and that's the seven thousand dollars. And so, this is the part where we need basically a council approval to spend money that's not budgeted, right? So, um, that's what we're here to ask the council, if this is something that you're interested in pursuing, if you need more information, or if you'd like a presentation to see what these do, uh, we could probably do all these things for you. We, we know that once we get going, it's going to take about fifteen months, uh, from the point that we authorize Casell to go, um, before we can go live with the software. So that's why we're looking at timeline right now. Um, we're hoping to be done with master planning and TSP by, uh, you know, the end of twenty-twenty-one, which is right around fifteen months, sixteen now. Um, and that's why we're looking to move.
Well, whereas I don't, whereas I don't understand, uh, necessarily all the details of what, uh, this represents, and I know that it needs to be done. And, uh, it is vitally important that we move forward with being able to control and capture the data, uh, throughout our business, and I think this is what this represents. Uh, we've been told time and time again that we have some shortcomings, and we need to get those fixed. Also, with the, uh, increased, uh, amount of activity that we're going to have in annexations and all of these things that we have going on, we need to improve how we handle all of this information and all of this data. So, this needs to be done. And it sounds like the timing is necessary as well, uh, knowing that we have a fifteen-month lead time, and there are a lot of things that we're going to be involved in moving forward, where this will be a benefit. So, I'm in favor of, uh, moving forward and at least, uh, giving you guys the, uh, authority to move forward on this project, because I do believe that is necessary. That's my opinion. Uh, anyone else?
I just had a question, um, from Mike and Ronnie. Do you know of any other towns in, in our area that are using this software?
Yeah. Uh, actually, hold on. Mike, talk. Um, I'm going to get those names real quick, because they did send it to me.
Yeah, actually, a, a number of the areas, or there's a number of towns and cities in our area that do use. Um, the other one was the Spring, what was it? Spring something or another, Ronnie?
Springbook.
Yeah, Springbook is another one that a lot of the cities use.
So the, the thing with Springbook, though, is they just sold to Acela, and Acela is putting on, on the back burner, so that was kind of, uh, a red flag for me.
Hey, and Ronnie, one of the questions in the chat room was, uh, the cost per license or station? And I, I remember from our presentation, this was for about four or five stations or four or five, uh.
Hold on, it's, it's in here, it's in the packets, it's in the very back somewhere.
It's, Springbrook mostly is for larger cities.
Right, it costs a lot more too, it's like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're going to do, we're going to do four license and they're concurrent user license, so that means, uh, anybody that has the login information could use it. For workstations, we're going to be adding two new workstations up front of the.
Four people at any given moment, so you could.
Lobby, yeah.
And so the way we, we figured this is like, we're not all going to be on it at the same time. And so the chance of having four people logged in, doing finance software, or doing permits, or doing court records all at the same time is not not likely for us for some time. And probably gives us, my guess is about five years worth of, be, before we actually need to look at maybe adding another license. And then, what was the other question? I'm sorry, uh.
Sean, and were you, uh, did that answer your question?
Yeah, and, and it kind of, I had another one too, but I think, um, it kind of answered both of them, because I was just going to ask how the cost compared with some of the other ones that you were looking at, and it sounds like there were other ones that were actually more expensive.
Yeah, so this one was, um, actually, I, I, this one was a great product, probably the best product out of all of them that I saw. And, you know, there, there was like four or five that we looked at, four or five suites. This one just seemed to flow better. It had all the access points that we were looking for, it worked well with what we were trying to do out of the development permit side, the record side, and it was recommended by our auditors for the financial side, so. All in all, we kind of thought this was like a good for what we use, a good mid-range piece of software, um, that will really help our operations in the long run.
So, to, Sean, to answer one of your questions real quick, uh, uh, I do know Cannon Beach you, has Casell. Uh, they did send me a list of other Oregon cities, I want to say, Bend was one of them, but I can't remember off the top of my head, and I can't get it on my phone right now, because I'm using it for the Zoom meetings.
We'll get you a list of who, who they're going with.
Well, I was just thinking it might be nice to maybe check in with a couple of those towns and ask them about their experience, since it is such a large amount of money, you know, um, how it's going with Casell from their standpoint, that'd be a good idea.
Good point.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. All right, so let's, uh, wrap this up.
Dave has a, has a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
So, I'm sure that you guys checked to see how long they've been in business. The other part of that question, I guess, is how long has this program been around? And, once we have it implemented, they're not going to come along with a brand-new program that we have to upgrade to. They're going to, to, uh, implement upgrades to the program as they come. Our cost remains the same.
Yeah, that's, that's why we wanted to go with the hosted, uh, because it gives all the updates, and we don't get outdated, um, in five years.
Yeah, so Dave, the other thing too, is I put it in the memo here, they come up, here it goes. Uh, so their upgrades are every three to seven years for major upgrades. And then the monthly, they do, uh, small monthly updates too. That's all included.
Okay.
Okay.
I think.
Questions or concerns?
Oh, sorry. I think one of the things that we had from them originally was the, uh, the business history, as well as people that they were ruling this out for and working with previously. And I'd have to go look at their proposal, which I have on the server, not on. But, uh, we can definitely send that in.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful. Okay. We want to make a motion to have Mike and Ronnie pursue this.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that, uh, we authorize the city manager and staff to follow up on entering into this contract, get it all started.
Matt's second, okay, and that's pending us getting you those, uh, the.
Modules.
You know, the proposals back to you, right?
Yes.
Correct. So now we need.
So, so when you guys are saying proposal, the, all the proposals and agreements are in here. Um, looking through it, it doesn't say the company names, but I think I do have the company profile information at, at work on my desk. Um, I can get that to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, Ron, Ronnie, that, that's what I'm talking about. We can get the, the company profile, and we can probably get them the numbers that came out of like myGov and Acela and Springbook and those sort of things that, that we have. So, we can get all that data, you can take a look at it, and, uh, if anyone has any objections, um, just let us know before the next council meeting.
Okay. That's.
Isn't the commitment tonight to commit to begin this project and spend the seven thousand, whatever it is, dollars to begin the implementation?
That's what we were asking for, but I think, uh, there's just two ways that we have motion and second on the table to kind of begin that process, yes, Counselor Platt. Um, and so. Um and so giving the motion second, I think we would move forward in that and then bring that information that was asked for that we didn't have for you tonight back to you over the next week or so for your review. And if there was any objections, we would halt that process um before moving forward and bring it back to the council. If there's no, if we don't hear any objections, say in like two weeks, we send the check off.
Okay. Alright, I think that's fair enough. I think the motion stands and um.
So it looks like they've been in.
That's okay, we don't need to answer.
You had a question.
Where, where is the money gonna come from if it's not budgeted?
Needs to be budgeted, yeah.
Contingency.
Yeah, it would have to come in contingency.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Any other conversation? Uh we need a vote. We did a motion and a second. All in favor?
Five, six, uh five, five and six in favor, seven, seven in favor?
Yes, I think everybody's raising their hand.
Alright, and we'll get you that uh additional data over the next week. Then if anyone has any objections, please let us know.
Okay.
If you do have an objection, we'll hold off.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright, um the last one is uh seven point five. Uh and it's just authorization to grant the C P I increases that we budgeted for the management team. The reason I'm bringing it up is because everyone's on contract, um myself, Ernie and Ronnie, or not Ronnie. Ronnie's, but uh myself, Ernie and Brian are all on contract, and therefore I'd have to modify uh the contract for the C P I increase. Uh I think it was, mirror's not on, but I think it was like two point nine or something like that.
Nine, that's what I saw.
Yeah, so uh the council's okay with that. We'll just move forward with that unless you wanna do something different.
Do you need a motion or can we just wave at you?
Well, does anybody have any questions if uh regarding that? Uh Sean, you're the newest member.
Yeah. I I I don't see it on our agenda, and I'm not really sure what you're talking about, to be quite honest.
That's, that's what I kind of figured.
Alright, so so we did a agenda add in the very beginning, and we added in a seven point five. Um and so what we did is every year, there's a uh a period where we do like manager reviews. Um and then typically we'll uh use that time period to do like evaluations, look at myself, look at uh Ernie and Brian, who consists of the management team. One of the ways that uh we deal with it is uh we'll go through like an executive session to do those evaluations, and then uh the council can decide if what they wanna do, um whether there's a raise involved, whether there's a bonus involved, what that looks like. Um this year, because things were tight, because COVID, everything else, um we did not budget for uh bonuses, we did not budget for um any sort of like substantial raise. So what we did is we budgeted a cost of living increase for all top step earners. And then uh we also had a union negotiation that we had to uh deal with back in March and April, um went into May. And uh we finally settled on a union agreement, which gave uh mostly union folks about a ten percent raise um effective July one. Um for those of us that were top step, uh we were basically frozen um where we're at with uh, you know, with the hopes that we went to budget with a two point nine percent C P I increase for those people at top step. That give you a little background on that and where we're at. The the negotiations were pretty brutal there for a few and uh but we're glad that we finally have the agreement under our belt, and it's uh for four years, so we have a four-year agreement with the union right now. Uh with the current rates that are there.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so any other questions or concerns regarding the two point nine percent increase as Mike explained? No? Well, we need a motion.
Make a motion and we go forward with two point nine percent increase for Michael Weston, Ernie Heple and Brian.
Sigler.
Sigler.
Yes.
I second.
All in favor, show of hands.
Yeah, seven, seven zero, Yanis?
Yes.
You guys?
Ads are approved.
I know we all appreciate it and means a lot for all of us, so thank you.
You guys have earned it, and you earn, you've actually earned more than that, but we're happy to do whatever we can, okay? You guys have proven your worth well and beyond what we're able to pay. So, thank you.
Been a fun year, right?
Absolutely. Much appreciated, everything that you guys do. Okay, so uh that was it for the uh agenda items. Uh we can move uh to report outs. Uh Ernie?
Okay, I'll try to get it out of the way real quick. First, can we brought up at the, before we started the meeting, uh King City has been a part of the recent car prowl uh crew that's been hitting the southern Washington County uh with Tigerd, Tuallaton, King City Sherwood um have been getting struck by this same crew that uh appears on a lot of ring cameras. My, and we've been pushing it out on uh social media, but we've been working hard on trying to get out the message that please lock your cars. Um if you are a firearm owner, please remove the firearm from your vehicle and uh bring it into your home. So just because we did have a firearm theft from a vehicle, we did have a vehicle stolen. It's since been recovered. Uh they've been recovered, being dumped in the, all the cars that have been stolen in the area have been recovered in the same area in Portland. And so uh you know, we have a pretty good starting point on this crew. Uh we think we are aware of who they are. Uh it's a bunch of juveniles, it's uh you know, it's a starting point. So that's about all the information I have on that as far as that investigation goes. So we've got a pretty good starting point. Hopefully, we can wrap it up into some conclusions sometime soon, but you know, I don't know yet. Uh secondly, you'll see, if you see the patrollers, uh I just had uh October is End Domestic Violence Month, and so you'll see some big purple ribbons that are uh on the front hoods of the cars are rather large, or I think they're four feet uh across the cars and stuff, so you'll see that. You also see us in social media and some TV uh spots uh highlighting that the I know Officer Kazmersky just filmed his parts. Or yes, they let him speak, and he did two languages, and he's not violated, did a really good job. And so we have that going, and then they're going to film, uh they're gonna do some drone footage of uh every agency is all gonna meet together, be in Hillsborough, uh I believe that's next week. And then I think there is one other uh thing that's gonna be filmed. So you'll see those highlighted in social media and across, hopefully in some, some news uh channels. And I think that's about it. Questions about the car prowl stuff, I'd be happy to answer uh the stuff that I can't answer. Still, I've got an active investig- investigation going on, and so, you know, I'll give you as much as I can.
Thanks, Ernie, I appreciate that update.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and and actually, there's one other thing. I know I saw, I'm not the biggest on social media and stuff, but I did see some people talk about some uh facial recognition software. And so we've been kind of digging into that stuff, and one of the things we're finding out, well, one is, is the people who I would have do that work can no longer do it. Portland, the city of Portland just outlawed it for their agencies to use, they can't assist, they can't do anything with it. Uh the software that's available uh on the web, uh like Clearview, and there's another one. They give you a starting point, but there are a lot of false identifications, and so it's not something, you know, it gives you a starting point, and maybe it narrows your search down. But it can literally start grabbing, you know, facial recognition from, it goes, you know, onto every website possible, but all of a sudden you start getting close matches from Russia, you start getting, you know, from every continent. So it's, it's a tough one. Can it be done? Yes, but it's just a starting point. It's not something I think we could just sit there and say, well, we're gonna go out and arrest this guy based on this facial recognition. That's not gonna happen. Uh so anyway, just kind of putting a little bit of that, you know, we are, I'm, I'm game, I'm open to anything that's just out. But uh you know, like I said, it's just a starting point for us.
Should we be worrying about about this and and think about what Portland did?
As far as outlaw on facial recognition? Uh I believe the state legislature is gonna take care of that this next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Ernie, appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh Mike?
I'll try to make it quick as well. I trust everyone has been getting the uh E O C updates for the fires, right? Just fire reports on where we're at. Uh we had a couple of questions that have come in around water, uh water reserve, water quality, water conservation. Uh what they're asking right now is that residents conserve water where possible. Um there's no need to panic, you know, but um they are asking that you can conserve water for their fighting the fires. Let's see, you know, we've had to deal with the rumor mill floating on that it's a bunch of fires being set by Anafah folks. Um you know, if there was no, nothing to substantiate that until just this last few days where we've uh seen a few arrests on people trying to start fires. Most of the big fires that we've seen are from either lightning strike, downed power lines or campfires. Um we've seen a few that were, uh you know, lit from fireworks. Uh we know of a few where, you know, the California one where it was a party, they let off some fire techniques and bam, have a fire. But uh you know, the bottom line is that there's a lot to be discovered. They're still out investigating these things and um we're trying not to feed into the rumor mill and trying to uh put those out as they, as they blow out. Um that's been kind of a struggle, I think, all week trying to deal with. We had the uh kickoff meeting for the master plan uh earlier today. Uh so that's going now. Uh the T S P newsletter is hitting, hitting mailboxes, should be hitting this week, I imagine. We have a tabling event scheduled for October eighth at the park. I believe it's from three to six. Um if memory serves from the email from uh J L A. Uh the backstop is in, so the backstop was delivered. Uh it is missing a couple of components. Uh it's missing the two side extensions that we had set up for that. Other than that, the building, City Hall's been really smoky. Uh I think it's because one of the air intakes is in the front lobby, and those double doors aren't airtight. So I think it just sucks the smoke in, and uh it's, it's just miserable in there right now as the air quality is so awful. Um supposedly, that's supposed to blow out in the next day or so. Um but we did just hear that Washington County is still closed tomorrow.
Yep.
I don't, if it's smoky like it is today, we're gonna have to close it down again. It's just not, it's just awful, and it's unhealthy and it's not safe for the staff to be in there.
Mike, it just, it got worse. I mean, we were down below three hundred earlier today. It's up to three thirty-seven again now.
Yeah, I don't know if the, we just didn't get the wind that they were hoping we'd get or what.
Yeah.
It is, it's pretty awful, so.
The weather um is moving more slowly than they anticipated, and that's that, and we had a south wind that was allowing smoke to come up from the uh fire in Sandy, the, is that the the Creek Fire, the one that's the Saniam? That, that was gonna be coming up today, and they, they predicted it would be worse today.
And we didn't get the weather front that was supposed to bring.
That's not gonna come until, it's not gonna start raining until tomorrow night, like eight o'clock.
Right. So we're, we're in it. So my bottom line is that you guys should remain shut down uh during this time period. I, I don't want Dave out there uh trying to do anything. And I don't want you guys sitting in there having smoke sucked into the building. So please, uh remain virtual.
Yeah, yeah, it's just um, you know, it's, it's kind of interesting, like I, I had a bunch of Zoom calls this morning, so I'd closed my office and I was in my office and, you know, it was okay. But then I opened up my office door and the smoke comes barreling in, you know? And it's the same for like the officer's quarters in the back corner, like their little area is secluded enough that the air is okay until you open up a door and then the smoke comes barreling in.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, it's, the building itself um is just a challenge right now with the smoke as it is. Um so we've uh basically kicked everybody out, or we, we said, don't come in unless you have to. And so, of course, today I think we were all there.
It's gotten to the point where, like I said, I spent uh just a few minutes out watering a few plants. And when I came back inside, I could smell the smoke in my clothes. So, I mean, and I wasn't out there that long.
It's getting into, it's, I've got smoke in my house. It's just I've had, I have repairman in and out, in and out, in and out, and.
That's a challenge, definitely a challenge.
But let's stay uh as safe as we possibly can, okay? Uh Mike, continue.
Um I think basically, you know, we're gonna have to bring a supplemental budget back before you here in the near future. Um try to figure out what we're gonna do there. Um other than that, I don't have much other stuff to report. Uh you know, we're still trying to chase CARES Act dollars. Uh the program for business relief went live, I think. That, it was like, not last week, I think the week before it went live for King City residents, and we posted that, that link out there. Um so those are for grants up to three thousand dollars for King City businesses and through the CARES Act for the second round. That's out there. Trying to think of what else we have going on, but right now I'm gonna draw on a blank, it's just been insane, so.
Have we gotten any money from the state under the plan?
Uh yeah, so we received eighty-four thousand dollars so far, plus an additional eighty thousand for our local businesses. So a total of a hundred and sixty-four thousand for, for those uses.
So have we uh provided any information directly to the businesses? How do they know at this point?
So uh we sent over an email list uh to Washington County, who then sent, those are the businesses that registered with King City. They sent the information for the CARES Act out to those businesses.
Okay, alright, so, uh and they are administering it for us anyway, so they're handling that piece. Okay, alright, that sounds good. Okay, so um let's.
Mister Mayor, before we go any further, there's a new one out now for nonprofits. I would encourage you to look at that. It's a countywide nonprofit uh so that's out on Washington County's website as well right now, so.
Okay, alright, beautiful, thank you. Okay, uh let's just go around the horn. Uh Dave, do you have anything?
I'm gonna pass my time to the next person.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh Gretchen?
Um I've been appointed to C C I, which is the Central Committee for the C P Os, Citizen Participation Organizations, and we had a meeting last night.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry?
Congratulations.
Or condolences, I'm not sure which. Um and we had a meeting, and I've been appointed to the Communication Subcommittee. Um the the process for getting information out to the public is really, from the county, is really convoluted.
the process for getting information out to the public is really, from the county, is really convoluted. And so this committee is going to look at and try to develop um, a plan to take to the County Commission for improving uh, communications pri- primarily regarding land use issues and transportation issues. Uh, otherwise, all my committees aren't meeting.
No, it's still quiet. Okay, thank you, Gretchen. Micah?
Um, I'm gonna just keep this short. We have a P A B meeting uh, tomorrow, just with the timing this uh, um, this month. Uh, we didn't have it before their city council meeting, so I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Micah. Smart?
Yes, um, I don't have much to report myself. I, I kind of, I think, I only attended the, the Homelessness Association for Ed Water. And you were on that meeting as well. I think Jamie was, Jamie was also in attendance. But I don't think the meeting was, um, didn't go well. Um, again, a lot of it was tied to, um, a lot of um, people that were like not uh, too happy about what was going on. And I think, um, I haven't had a chance to pull off to see what the outcome was with the, with the um, the final conclusion of, of the way to move forward yet. So um, I, 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 I think um, it was a good start with this to get people together and talk to what was uh, concerning. And I think um, um, opportunity for everyone to voice um, their, their opinion. Um, we, we, we used the opportunity to kind of like, uh, reach out to people as well, um, saying if they really want to know what's going on in the city, they need to come to this meeting, um, with open to the public, open to the general, um, um, city, King City residents to come in and voice their opinion. Um, I think we, we, we'll continue working on that and I continue to work in the background, um, contacting uh, Mike and Ronnie and uh, for um, individuals that are trying to reach out to me, um, some of the other topics. Some of the topics that were being discussed out here. I think great opportunity for us to reach out to our citizens and uh, and let them know what we're doing and the opportunity for them to also come and participate in these meetings and voice their opinion as well. So that's all I have, thank you.
Well, I've, I've tried to uh, have a, a couple of meetings with all of the H O A presidents. We've had one so far. I would like to schedule another. Uh, I was on that call as well. And uh, you know, uh, I haven't seen anything about uh, the ballot voting uh, that they were encouraging people to do. And uh, the one item that was more city related uh, than H O A related was uh, the issue, the declaration on uh, Fisher Road uh, that they had. I talked to a couple of the neighbors who were not involved in that meeting and they knew nothing about the ballot. They didn't know that they were supposed to be voting on something, so uh, there are a whole bunch of people that didn't get the information on what was going on with that. So I don't, uh, I, even if they did get a vote, uh, the percentage might have been so small that it wouldn't represent uh, Ed Water uh, in uh, at large anyway. So uh, we'll see how it goes. I'll continue to uh, participate uh, just to encourage people. If you want to know more, you need to get involved in the city uh, meetings, uh, come to the uh, or get involved in the uh, council meetings to ask the appropriate question. And also get involved in the transportation system planning process and the master planning process. That's how you have a voice. That's what these are designed for, so we'll see how it goes.
Smart, just, smart, uh, the next morning for everyone else, uh, I got a little passionate on the call, on the Zoom meeting. Um, and the next day I sent out kind of a, you know, I, I apologize, I talked over people and if, you know, I, I didn't intend to be disrespectful, but because I raised my voice, I felt like I had been a little disrespectful. So I apologize for that. And I actually gave uh, all of the, I was contacting the attorney who's not acting as an attorney, but is the voice for this group of can, you know, group of people. So I've been communicating with him. I sent him a list of absolutely every way that citizens can get information from the city. So the Facebook pay, you know, Facebook, LinkedIn, uh, I gave links to absolutely all the contact information. And um, again invited them and said that, you know, regardless of whether I agreed with wh- what they were doing or what they believe or whatever, right? They should never feel like they don't know how to contact the city or be in contact. And so I, I gave that information. I also put all that information up on Nextdoor. Um, because, and I invited a lot of people to come to the meeting tonight and I, you know, I think we just have to continue to reach out and try to connect people. But again, here we are, another meeting and none of those people are here and um, and that's frustrating because they continue to complain about not being in contact with the city and yet, right? We reach out, but I will continue to reach out and uh, so there we are, but.
You remember the, one person spoke and kind of chastised me because that person said, I've never met you.
I've never even heard of you. I, she said, not even that, I've never heard of you. Yeah, this is the first I've heard of you.
I don't know how that's my fault. I'm not going to go uh, do any more than I'm doing. And we've had Regal Curry articles, Oregonian articles, all of these things that have taken place. And because some, somebody in the community doesn't know who I am, what have they done to try to learn who the city council is and who represents this city? You know, and it's, it, but that kind of attitude, I don't know what more uh, we can do along those lines. That's the way it's going to be. So, I don't, I, I just want people to understand there's clear separation between what the city's responsibility saw and what uh, the H O A's responsibilities are. And they need to educate themselves on these things. And we're here for them. All they need to do is, you know, join us for me and ask a question. That's a very, it's even more simple now than it's ever been. So, so Smart, were you finished?
Yes, I'm done. Uh, thank you. I, I think you and Jamie will handle it well, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Alright, Jamie?
Uh, I don't have too much to report. I think for those who have been down to the park, you might see, oh, can I do this on the, look at, there we go.
Oh, there's the shit, the book, the book.
Our little free library.
It weren't so smoky, I, I could see it from my window right here.
There we go, yes. And uh, we, I teased the mayor since he has a good view of it that it was going to be neon and uh, glow in the dark. But yes, so uh, Annie Paulson, Cal- uh, Counselor Paulson's wife and I painted and uh, we had a very fun time doing it. So um, that's all up and uh, looking beautiful down there. Luckily, we got it in right before the fire started. Um, then uh, as I think everyone can imagine, we have a little renewed uh, interest in our emergency preparedness um, efforts. It, it got stalled. Um, we got some feedback from uh, um, a few people that the Highland Community and the K C C A, we, we were having a little hard time drumming up some interest. Um, but I certainly think that now post these fires and the early stages of the fire when we had um, the Bald Peak, uh, you know, that, that was pretty close. So I think there's going to be renewed interest in that. So Brian Sigler and I will uh, kind of continue on with that. Um, I also heard on the grapevine that King City Police Department uh, nominated a nonprofit in King City for a prestigious award of Washington County. And the fire, the, that foundation apparently made it to the final stage and that committee was held last night. So everyone in King City should be on the edge of their seat awaiting whether our city has been awarded this prestigious award. No idea eh, when it would be announced, but uh, that is exciting. So I'm sure, yes, man.
We had to vote last, uh, by noon today. And so uh, sometime in the next few days, we don't, you know, whoever went, won.
Right, exciting. Yes, I, well, I'm excited for that. I, 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 I am, I was very pleased to hear from uh, from Sergeant Sigler that the field was very competitive with a lot of really great organizations and individuals. So um, we shall see how it goes. It was a clearly an honor for that organization to be nominated and in, as a finalist. So uh, very exciting and I'm sure you all hear if uh, if King City wins.
Alright, well deserved if you do, but well deserved to even be nominated.
Exactly, very much so.
Okay, alright, Jamie, well, thank you. Alright, uh, Shawna?
Uh, so I don't have a lot to report, but I did register for the L O C Annual Conference next month.
Okay, good.
I'm looking forward to that. Um, I am curious, um, we haven't gotten, or at least I haven't gotten um, anything from the city staff regarding our assignments that we signed up for a couple of months ago for the committees. So I'm anxious to, to get that back from the staff at some point soon, hopefully.
Ronnie, did, I thought you sent that out.
Unless I missed it, did it get sent out?
Did you?
I sent that out. I'm pretty, I, I'm pretty sure I did.
I, I didn't see it.
I haven't gotten it.
Alright, well, we can.
I think I did get it where Ronnie sent out like what everyone was appointed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, I, I think I got it. The, my only que- tacking on to Shawna's point though is uh, Ronnie, will we get, like, if there's a meeting, will we get invited by the committees and organizations for upcoming meet, meetings? Or do we just need to work with you to figure out when all of them are and sign up? You know, like? Yeah, I haven't received, I haven't received any like, uh, you know, emails or any announcements for meetings.
Usually I just send an email to whatever organization you guys are doing and then they add you guys.
Okay.
And then, but I haven't heard from anybody and I, like, small cities, I have no idea what they're doing right now.
Right, right.
Um, I, I, I believe they canceled all their meetings for the rest of the year.
Yes.
Mike, um, so there's really no communication from that organization right now. Um, the C D B G, I have, that's another organization. I believe I have Micah and you.
Yeah.
Or Jamie as contacts. I don't know if they're sending any out, any emails.
They're removed, funny enough, they've never removed me off of it, so I get a lot of the information anyway, so. I enjoy just seeing stuff, so.
Yeah, so, so soon as I send the, soon as I send all the comp, uh, all the information to the company or to the counties, I don't know if they're actually sending you guys in anything. Um, so if you guys say you're not, if you say you're not, let me know and I'll send an email again. But I'm pretty, I thought I sent out the agenda, the stuff, but I'll go ahead and send out everything out again, just in case.
I don't remember seeing it, Ronnie, so I, you know, I, I've gone through all of my emails and I.
Alright, yeah, no, I, I've, yeah, I can definitely send it out again.
On the twentieth, August twentieth.
On the twentieth?
Oh, you got it on the twentieth, Smart?
Yep, I got twentieth at two fifty seven P M.
Okay, alright, well, uh, maybe I just missed it and I apologize for that, so, okay.
I, I looked at mine, I didn't get it, so.
Alright, alright, we'll make sure that we all have it. Uh, Shawna, you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, alright.
The date again?
Twentieth.
Yes.
Of what month? August?
October.
August, yeah. August.
Ken? Ken?
Yes.
Were you going to talk about the N L C?
I'm getting ready to do my report out right now and I was going to bring that up.
Great.
Uh, coming up in uh, November, we're going to have uh, the N L C is doing a conference, virtual conference from November eighteenth to the twentieth. And uh, this is a unique opportunity for King City because we've never been able to participate in an N L C conference because of the pure cost. They're always held at a different city and there's flight and hotel involved in the cost of it. And it's been way beyond our uh, budget to be able to attend. Now, because it's going to be virtual, uh, this is a unique opportunity uh, for King City to participate. And I think it would be wonderful if a couple of our counselors can participate in that. Now, uh, there's information online about it and uh, if you go to the N L C website, you'll have all the information you need. But it's important to note that the early bird uh, uh, fees uh, are good until November thirtieth. That's when the early bird ends. And right now for a, a member, it's a hundred ninety nine dollars and for a non-member, it's three fifty. And then it jumps up to two forty five for not, for a member and four twenty five for a non-member. Alright. So uh, bottom line, I, it'll be purely on a, a volunteer basis. I know that Gretchen has been, been involved in the N L C uh, for quite some time, so I'm.
I just need to have someone put on mute.
Where is that?
I'm just going to mute everybody and then I'll, I'll unmute you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm good.
I'm going to mute, uh, there you go.
Okay, alright, so uh, Gretchen uh, is a logical uh, person to attend. And budget wise, you know, we haven't spent any money on uh, council travel or any of that kind of stuff. So I'm kind of thinking that we have a budget to accommodate at least two uh, members of the council. Uh, so if you're interested, take a look at the uh, website and uh, then make a decision on whether or not you might be interested in participating in that one, November eighteenth through the twentieth.
What is? Is that an L, L C?
National League of Cities. We have the
Oh, gotcha.
League of Oregon Cities and then the entire, for the, uh, entire nation is the National League of Cities. And uh, League of Oregon City is a member of uh, the parent group as well. Uh, and we've been really having a lot of dialogue with them of late, especially on all the governmental legislative uh, concerns for cares and all the things that uh, we need in support of the uh, COVID uh, legislation that we've been trying to get uh, uh, finances on. So uh, it's uh, it's probably going to be pretty good. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting, uh, a virtual meeting with one of the representatives from the N L C uh, to talk about equity, uh, diversity and inclusion uh, from a national level. They have a program. Uh, the acronym is R E A L. I don't remember uh, exactly what that uh, stands for, but it's an equity arm of the N L C. But I sent all you guys the uh, videos from the uh, first two uh, the two uh, 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 conference dates uh, for the Oregon Mayors Association. One of those videos was uh, done by R E A L. And that was the National League of Cities. I don't know, did any of you get a chance to uh, look at uh, day one, day two of the Oregon Mayors Association? They were really good and uh, they're asking us for input on what we thought. Uh, so if you guys haven't had an opportunity to take a look, please take a look and provide me some feedback on what you think. It was uh, two pieces had to do with uh, racial issues. Uh, one was by the Oregon uh, uh, Historical Society and the other one was by the National League of Cities R E A L. So uh, please take a look and then give me some feedback on what you think about those two presentations, okay? Uh, so uh, one final thing and then I'm going to let everybody go. Uh, any thoughts on uh, what families are going to be doing for Halloween in terms of the COVID situation? Uh, anybody talking about doing trick or treating and that kind of stuff for Halloween?
We need to get a handle on this because the Ed Water community does do a big thing and there's people getting prepped up for open houses and they're inviting people to walk through. I, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure what our authorities are from a city to a private person on who they can invite in their house and things, but I, I would just say we need to put something out the, to discourage any, any. to discourage any, any sort of internal activities like that.
Right.
There, there's some, uh, you know, the, the chatter in the various groups online, um, you know, it, it, the, it swings from one extreme to the other, right? There's a lot of people just saying, hey, this year, you know, we're gonna rent some family fun Halloween movies and dress up and have, uh, indoor Halloween-themed family night. And, you know, there's others that are saying, oh, you know, they're gonna do trick-or-treating with just their little circle of close friends and each other's houses, but not do a big group. And then there's others that are out there saying, you know, they're, you know, they're not gonna let COVID take Halloween away from them, right? And it, I, I think the, in our neighborhood, in my opinion, I guess Shawna and Kate, if you're on here, um, the, I, I have a sense that this community is a little more leaning towards not wanting to do trick-or-treating. I think there's a lot of people that still wanna decorate their house and, like, get festive, but I think there's a lot of people who just aren't going to, uh, participate in trick-or-treating. But I think, yeah, I mean, it's really hard, because you know, as, taking off my council hat and talking about the foundation, right? I, we haven't, we're having a meeting next week. I suspect that collectively, Annie and Viva and I are not going to want to do any kind of Halloween event that we normally do. I, I just think the risk is too great, and, um, you know, so as far as that, they, you know, I don't think we're gonna, you know, we, I haven't talked to the, I haven't talked to Annie and Viva, but I, my sense is that that's what, the discussion and the determination that we're gonna come to. I, I certainly can reach out to the PSO of Deer Creek and see what they're leaning. I, I suspect they're leaning the exact same way that, you know, they wanna do, they want to help. I mean, I don't see how we can promote Halloween trick-or-treating when we're not back in school.
I don't.
You know, we, I mean, how can we?
I don't see that happening. I, I don't, it shouldn't happen. I did see a news report, and I don't remember the detail of where it was, but a city banned trick-or-treating. You know, I don't know how the city did that with, be it an ordinance or whatever the case may be, and I don't think we wanna go down that path. But I certainly need to, uh, I am totally in favor of discouraging any form. Uh, it's, it's two pieces. One, large gatherings, uh, celebrations, and also trick-or-treating. I don't think this is the right time to do either one of those things. Uh, but the question on the table is, what do we do as a city, or what can we do in order to discourage it?
What is, oh, go ahead.
It seems to me we could, um, send out a, if Ronnie can do it, citywide emails suggesting that people follow the national, the medical guidelines and not have, and state, the state, um, emergency order, not have large gatherings and, um, avoid kids going out where they could be exposed.
I think, uh, putting on as well, I think to, to piggyback on that, Gretchen, it might be, uh, you know, something suggesting, like, here are a few suggested alternatives, you know, and I could work with Ronnie about, you know, some of those fun things that we say, okay, you know, maybe this isn't the year to go trick-or-treating. Here are some fun links to other things that you could do as a family to, you know, have fun, but be safe, so.
Or maybe be online with friends.
Yeah, so, um, what I'm hearing is, is that, uh, you guys are gonna talk about it, uh, uh, at your next meeting, is that right? Uh, Jamie?
Yeah.
So maybe you guys ought to just give us some feedback. You can just send an email to everybody, a group email, on what you guys conclude. And then, uh, via phone calls with Mike and Ronnie, if we need any support from the city to put something out, post it on, uh, website or whatever the case may be. I, I think that's probably the max that we can do, but we certainly, uh, don't wanna just ignore it. I think it needs to be at least discouraged.
Yeah. Yeah, no, like I said, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to the Deer Creek PSO and to the, there's a few very large mom groups, and, you know, I'll, I'll reach out a few other places and just find out what people are doing.
We, we just wanna be safe.
Yeah, well, and we have, I mean, we have a community that, you know, half our community is very vulnerable, and you know, not only do we want our kids to be safe, but we want everyone else in King City to be safe, too, and the last thing we need is some rapid-fire COVID outbreak, right?
Any other thoughts from anybody else? Okay, well, then we need a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
I second.
Uh, all in favor? Okay, guys, thank you so much. You guys stay safe, and, uh, it's hard to stay smoke-free, but do your absolute best.
Ken, can you stay on for just a minute?
Okay.